All right, welcome everyone. It is June 7th, 2018. This is the Haring Brook meeting. And Annie for our honors.
Continued from May 17th, 2018. S E B, Haring Brook Meadow LLC requests a modification to the comprehensive permit for Haring Brook Meadow LLC pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23. The request for changes on file with the CVA for the project located at 126 and 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Accessory Map 58, Block 1, Parcels 8A and 5, Situette.
Thank you. And tonight, the applicant here presents some information. The board will have some questions. It will be opened up to the audience after we have our questions, so everyone will have a chance to voice their concern or opinions this evening. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Engler. I'm representing the applicant in this case. I would, we don't have much to present tonight. I would draw your attention to the letter we submitted, dated June 1st last week, to the board. I'll talk to you that letter and the exhibits that we submitted along with the letter. The first was what we titled "The Management Plan for the Relocation of Cars in the Garage During a Major Flood Event." I want to indicate how this plan was developed. It was not developed independently by us. We, through our business and various relationships, have lots of relationships with property management companies. We sat with two of them prior to developing this, to talk to them about the concerns, obviously share the plans, talk through the issues, and we got their feedback and input on what they would recommend if they were the manager of this development. And one of them, in fact, said that they would be very interested in being the manager of this development should it be built. So we had a draft plan, and then, I believe it was two weeks ago yesterday, we had a meeting, my architect, civil engineer, and myself, with the deputy fire chief and the fire chief, to go through the plans in great detail. And as one of the items that we talked about, we talked about the management plan, and during that meeting, we solicited their ideas on the plan. So I think it's important for the board to recognize that the draft before you, and I most certainly titled it a draft because I think, as we talked about later on in the process, you know, we're open to ideas and suggestions on additional things to include. And as you see in the plan itself, one of the things is really annual correspondence with the fire department on the plan. But that plan is inclusive, not only of management company expertise, but also the town of Situette's own fire department on how that they, how they would administer this evacuation plan. We feel pretty good about it. We think it's certainly feasible and executable, and, you know, we would expect the condition in the permit that whether you reference this exhibit, or whether this is just more illustrative for what the eventual plan may or may not conclude, that's obviously at your discretion, but I think it addresses a lot of the questions on this particular issue that the board had. So if there are any specific questions to the plan, I'd be happy to answer, otherwise I can move on to some of the other items.
Evacuation plan? Any questions?
No.
I do. What's your working definition of the word "major"?
It's actually a, it's a, it's a technical term, and it's, I think it's, and forgive me, I'm speaking out of school here a little bit, it's a term that the fire department uses, but I think it ties into the National Weather Service. I think there's a major flood event that, and I don't know specifically, you know, the size of the storm per se that earns that classification, but it's not a loose adjective. In other words, it's not like, you know, during a really big storm, it has a specific, and I could endeavor to get that for you, but it does tie in somehow to the National Weather Service.
I kind of figured it must. My concern would be that everybody's working off the same definition, and that the definition, if you intend to use that term, and it's all over this plan, is that there's some criteria by which everybody understands what the definition is.
I completely agree. That was introduced from the Situette Fire Department. That was their term, and they said, you know, they make the declaration that it's a major flood event, and their source information, I think is, I think they had two sources, but one of them, I believe, is the National Weather Service.
And that it be tied to the fire department determination appears to be number five in the plan.
Right, right, right. Right, because right now it just says "Property Management Company" will identify, you know, so it's sort of, kind of the wording of it to me. I mean, and I understand this is a draft, but I'm looking at it, and I want somebody else responsible for declaring what a major event is.
Well, it's confirmed by the fire department.
Right. So, the other question I had is, you give some responsibility to a 24-hour on-call maintenance Where do you plan to have that maintenance supervisor located?
Wherever the management company is, has that person. I mean, if it's, for instance, I mean, I'll give you one of the names, Corcoran Management, who's a major property management company. Were they to be the manager, you know, they have, I think, an office in Weymouth, they have, so it'd be somebody, I mean, it wouldn't be somebody in New York, you know, or Vermont, but I can't say that it would be, you know, the emergency on-call person would be somebody in Situette, but as it's over, you know, within a 24-hour period, it would be somebody reasonably close by.
Right. I mean, because my concern is, when you look at number eight, that individual, it says, will be the individual, will be the individual responsible for moving cars out of the garage. So, we've had times where the floods waters have, recently floodwater has come in so quickly that people are stranded inside the CVS. So to have somebody 20 minutes away, half hour away, isn't really going to work, I don't think, on a practical basis.
Respectfully, I don't think the CVS flooded in 20 minutes or half an hour, and...
It actually did.
Well, hang on a second. We're talking about someone who went into CVS when there was a storm, and they knew there was a bad storm.
These were employees.
Well, but still, they went to work at CVS when there was a bad storm, and they knew probably more than a day in advance that the CVS was susceptible to flooding on that day. We're talking about when the fire department, and we've all gotten emails from the fire department, rightly so, that warned of a flood event that didn't turn out to be as bad. In an abundance of caution, if the fire department determines that there's a potential for a flood event, these cars will be moved. No one's waiting to see if it actually ends up being a flood event.
Correct.
It's predicted, and the cars are moved.
I just have, I haven't, I remain the issue. I disagree with Anthony. I'm telling you, if you've got 77 cars, I don't know what the percentage you think that might be able to, I have no way of knowing, and I respectfully suggest you have no way of knowing what percentage of people are going to be available. I'm just saying that I've, I mean, I think it's, it's wonderful to have, it's important to have somebody responsible. I'm just a little bit concerned about somebody being at any kind of great distance.
Well, what would you recommend?
I don't have a recommendation. I just say that I think it's something that needs to be thought about a little bit deeper.
I wonder, too, if, if there could be some thought given to, let's say, Governor Baker, or whoever calls a state of emergency, and is recommending that, you know, people get off, get out of the shore. I mean, that would be a serious event, obviously, but it happens, and...
Right, but, but here's the important thing, though. As you guys have intimated, we need one source, and the Situette Fire Department makes sense to be that source of declaration, because they're tied in. If Governor Baker declares a state of emergency on the South Shore, I would imagine the Situette Fire Department is in agreement with that declaration.
And likely gave a notice to the entire town well in advance of that.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. Some of those orders come along with a "get out" thing, and you have property management people who, coming into an area of, you know, there's no required of it, you're not going to be arrested for not evacuating, but, I mean, there are serious things and recommendations to leave coastal areas sometimes.
The fire department thought this plan worked, and I'm not saying it's perfect, and if it needs to be revisited, we're happy to revisit it, but I think it's a pretty good and responsive plan based on some of the issues that we had heard from the board in previous hearings.
And I don't mean to suggest I don't agree with that. I do. I just, I just, it's my job to look at what areas I'm concerned about and bring it up.
And I think one of the, and it's a fair point, and I think that's one of the reasons that the fire department, and we've written into the plan on an annual basis, we're going to review the plan. You know, we had this happen last year, and this part worked awesome, and, you know, plan really is working great, or this happened, or we had this declaration, and all the cars got moved, and nothing, the flood, so it, it should be revisited on an annual basis, and I would imagine after, you know, hopefully, you know, maybe it's great right off the bat, maybe after a year or two, but it'll, it'll get massaged, so it works for everybody. Most importantly, that the fire department feels comfortable with that.
Just to follow up on that, too. Now, when they get their email or text blast saying, "Okay, we're going to move," who's going to be doing the moving? Are the owners going to be moving their own vehicles? Is the management firm going to be moving the vehicles? How, what, who's responsible? So do we have 76 different vehicle owners responsible for doing all the moving? Or is the man, does the management company physically move the cars themselves?
I don't, I thought we spelled that out a little bit, but I think the intent is the owners that are, that are present, that are around, will move their car, and people that are in Florida, or, you know, away for the weekend, or whatever, that will indicate, "Hey, I'm not there, move my car." So if you're there, I would, if I was there, I would move my own car if I lived there. So, I mean, we can spell that out a little bit more, but that's the intent.
I think, I think a spelling out of, "It's declared that we need to move our cars."
You have...
"We think Joe and Karen are home, they're going to move their car." A certain number of hours goes by, and Joe and Karen don't move their car, maybe the property manager, he's going to move somebody else's car because he knows they're in Florida, he's going to move Joe and Karen's car, too. I think, I think adding that step into here would make sense.
And I think that's a reason, I think that's a reasonable step.
So Jeff, just, and just to round out what the fire chief, and I don't know what he said to you guys on the evacuation plan, the summary email that, that I received from him, he didn't say that he disliked it, he said that there was, there was a plan, and then he said specifically that he wasn't endorsing at all. He just said that there would be something tied to the major event status, but I don't, I didn't see anything in the correspondence. I know that our correspondence focused on the other issue regarding flooding more than this issue, and I'm not saying that he panned your plan either, but he didn't, I didn't see anything where he endorsed it per se.
And I would...
He said he would continue to work with you.
I would agree with that characterization, and candidly, the deputy chief and the chief are not, I think, going to endorse or refute anything.
Oh, they specifically said they won't endorse anything.
But, right, but they also, I mean, if you want to get into what the conversation was we had, but I, I'm not suggesting that they're on record in writing, but I can tell you, we went through the plan and talked about it, and they seemed comfortable with it, and several of the items in the plan came directly from their recommendation, but, and then we sent this to...
They described the plan in, in like, two sentences, what you're saying, not with all these bullet points, and then they didn't say yea or nay whether they liked it or didn't like it.
That's fair.
In the correspondence back to, back to the, I think, me and Annie and...
Nor will they.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, we're talking about the plan. We've read it, the public hasn't, and the viewing audience hasn't, and I heard some grumbling. The, the plan does stipulate that keys be made as a contingent, I mean, as a...
Condition.
Condition of ownership and of continued occupancy. The keys are made available on an annual basis. There's a review of what, what the current vehicles that are owned by the tenants, or the owners, that I would assume, and I didn't read it specifically, but I assume a waiver of liability for moving their cars would also have to be included, just from a, you know, property manager's, you know, best practice type of thing.
And can I, can I make, I'm sorry?
Yeah. So I think that the, the plan does take into consideration people being out of town. We have to also consider that oftentimes, when these storms come, and we've been dealing with them, you know, or I've been dealing with them for over 60 years, usually, not all those years that I could do anything, but, you know, we know when things are coming, we start to move our cars. If we're at work, we don't park where we normally park. When we get home, we park someplace else, just like we do when we know there's a snowstorm coming, we back into our driveway instead of going in straight. I mean, all of these things are reasonable. Not all people are reasonable, but with a property management company in place, I can appreciate the effort that's been done here, but I think that, you know, there's a little, some tweaking, and you've made it clear as a draft, so. I just have a question, though, and this is, in a typical condominium-type arrangement, the homeowners' association management shifts to the homeowners after the developer has passed a certain percentage, sold, et cetera. Because this is a 40B, I, do you stay involved with the property after it's developed? It will eventually transfer to the property, the homeowners' association.
Correct.
All of these rules and regs that are in place will be the homeowners' association to maintain. Is there a, can they be made in perpetuity, connected to the deed?
Well, a couple of things. I think, potentially, this plan can be a condition of a permit that is granted. That permit is incumbent upon the property, regardless of who owns it or controls it. I, an association could, especially if they all worked together, change the bylaws of a condominium after they leave, but I think that's where a condition of the permit doesn't get affected by that.
Correct.
It becomes an enforcement matter for you. I mean, if you have a recalcitrant homeowners' association, and, I mean...
That would be a co-enforcement situation.
Yeah. You have, the town has recourse regardless, as Anthony said, of whether, you know, we're involved during the sellout, or whether five years from now, or whomever, because the permit, you have recourse through that process.
Yeah, bearing in mind that recourse, and I'm not suggesting there isn't recourse, but there's no way to, for our enforcement agent here to know whether or not they have someone who is a responsible party until after something happens.
Well, that's my point. If we had a, if this were a commercial property that was going to be maintained by one contact owner, that's one person that can be fined, penalized, whatever. In the case of a homeowners' association, we all have experience, I'm sure, with homeowners' associations that are very tight and well-run, and others that are a little more loose, and I can imagine a program such as this could start to become less, less stringently followed, and until there's a, that storm comes, and two-thirds of the cars are underwater, and then they start pointing fingers, and the bottom line is, we have two-thirds of the cars underwater, and, you know.
Can I make a point on that? Your point's well taken. In our experience, though, when you're dealing in an association with 48 units, they're more likely to have it professionally managed than, you know, you have an eight-unit association or four units or whatnot, where it's a little bit more, you have a go-getting kind of owner, and it's like, but when you're dealing with the issues, you know, and the size and scale, I would be surprised if they don't have, I mean, ultimately, as you know, you know, we put in place Corcoran or whomever else, and when the full property is sold, they can, through a vote of the board, choose a different manager.
Or no manager.
Or, or no manager. But they're still required to uphold the conditions of the permit, but I would be, knowing the nature of the buyer of these types of properties, I mean, I can't guarantee it, but I would be very surprised.
I don't disagree with you as well, but, again, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, properties easily the size in Florida that are homeowner association members managed, and a little different because often you have retirees who have more skill than the property managers that are available to hire, and they're willing to take it on themselves, but they, we can't make it, or can we make it a contingency that it is, there is a professional property manager...
I think we can.
...retained on the, you know, in this project. I mean, if it was a hotel, I'd...
You can, and then...
I'd be after the corporation that owns it, and, you know, there'd be something...
Yeah, you absolutely can, and we do that pretty frequently. It, it just becomes a matter of, of enforcement, and...
Well, it is part of the state building, though, too, the requirement to have this plan in place, as a permit when I build parking in a floodway.
It gets gritty of what's a professional property manager. We'd have to figure that out, but, yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that when we have lots of, we're putting in some layers here of...
Yeah.
...management that I'd like to be assured that it will actually be done.
Right, to further backstop the condition a little bit. It makes sense.
The question is, I think, is there, is there confidence that 20 years down the road, that anyone is really going to pay much attention than, other than having kind of some kind of big contract with a management company, and you'd have to be satisfied. We'd write the condition as stringently as we can. It becomes a matter of enforcement, and typically, that enforcement comes after the fact, when something bad happens. So you're not going to have your zoning enforcement officer sending notes saying, "Oh, by the way, can I see this year's management contract?"
No, usually it's the, the neighbors who complain about it or something, but the, the homeowners' association isn't likely to report on themselves, unless there's a disgruntled homeowner.
One thing that may be to be considered is, for example, with an accessory dwelling special permit, the homeowner or person responsible is required many times to sign an affidavit every year, saying that "I still live on this property," because that's one of the conditions of having an accessory dwelling. You could perhaps have something like that to be signed by the officers of the homeowners' association or their designees on a yearly basis.
Same way, the, the meeting with the fire department to review...
I don't think you'd need that. I think what you'd ask for is a management contract, you know? If you had a valid man, say, "We want to see your, your management contract," which would have a start date and an end date, and, and be signed by Corcoran or whomever in the board, and I think you'd need to have an affidavit.
Getting a management contract every year is better than an affidavit, isn't it?
It's a set piece.
We're getting it from the source, rather than taking someone else's word for it.
Unless at some point there is no management company involved.
Well, but then we don't get a contract, we don't have a current contract, and they're in violation of the condition. We know that it's missing.
I don't, yeah. To answer the, I don't think we would have an issue with the condition. I would defer to your counsel. I haven't heard of it before. If it's legal, you know, if, if it's...
What?
...requiring a homeowners' association to have a professional management company.
Sure.
Yeah.
We do that on the rental side all the time, because it's more of an ongoing need for monitoring and programmatic function. I don't see why not, especially given the local concern here. This isn't relating to tenancy, it's relating to an issue on the ground.
So we, we wouldn't have an issue with it.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting it to impose it as a burden, it's simply to assure that what you anticipate would happen, and, you know, I think it's a reasonable...
Well, to ensure something like this evacuation plan gets implemented and executed, so we understand the desire for that.
Anything else on the evacuation plan?
Would you want to ask the...
On the fire.
Public, just on that issue alone?
Sure, we can open up the public now, just on that issue alone, on the evacuation plan, if you have any questions now.
It's all going to tie together.
I think, I think he's going to raise the same question that I think, is that going to work, limiting their comments to just one thing? Should we maybe get...
Well, I'm just saying, we wait till the end of the meeting, we've got four or five subjects, but if you want, that's fine.
Yeah, just an idea.
But I think the other, I mean, we only have a couple other things, and I think it all ties together, so I might just, you know, I won't be, I'll be 10 more minutes, and then, you know, and then we can open it up. So, so let's skip to number three, then, which is the, the plan we did based on the, and it's this plan. This plan we developed based on the recommendation of the fire department when we met with them, and what this plan is showing is the extent of the flooding during the January 4th flood, which was considered historic by anybody's standards in Situette, including the fire department, and we got the actual data from, from the, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. And I think there's some characterization that during these storm events, that our cars are going to be floating off into the Atlantic.
Well, just a, one other question on that. I know we had another, then we, that map was sent at one point. Does that represent a different flood than you're talking about on this?
I think that's, that's probably the FEMA flood plain.
All right, so the FEMA flood plain, so we're using something less restricted than the FEMA...
Well, let me just finish my line of, all right. The FEMA flood plain is elevation 17.
Yeah.
This shows the extent of flooding in the, from the January 4th event, based on actual, factual data. And what this shows is that during the peak flood of that event, the limit of water would be a foot and a half lower than the slab of our basement.
So what elevation is that referring to on, on that one, then?
The elevation, well, the elevation of our basement slab, I believe, was 12.
Yes.
So about 10 and a half.
So you...
And that's actual. This is not like, we're not pulling information, you know, from sources that are favorable to us. This is recorded information. So to put it another way, water would not enter our garage, would not have entered our garage during that storm event on January 4th.
So much?
Yeah, but I still, I'm still a little concerned, again, going back to the FEMA flood map, that that's...
Oh, it's in the flood plain, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, do we use that as a guideline, what could happen? You know, it could be a case where we don't have anything for five years, and then we have three in one year.
It's an anecdotal, admittedly, it's an anecdotal exhibit. The FEMA, we have to design to the FEMA flood plain, which is at 17. We've not wavered from that from day one, and that's how the plan has been designed. But we developed this plan as a way of communicating some real, actual evidentiary information based on actual events. And the, and the January event, which by anybody in Situette or the South Shore's memory and classification was a legendary, historic storm, what have you, water would not have entered into our basement. That's all this exhibit says. When we finished this, we didn't change our design, we didn't, you know, have somebody do something else. It's just an exhibit. I'm not saying the board should do anything with it. I'm just saying we think it was important to, because there's, I think, been some mischaracterizations about how things will happen.
But I only would suggest, though, that this is suggesting a placid rise of water. The water isn't, was wind-driven, there were waves in the area. I went out, saw them. I mean, I don't, they're not six-foot waves, but it was flowing, and, and this may be where it was if you, if it was a bathtub filled up to a certain elevation, but I, I challenge whether, whether your garage would have been dry. It, I'm not, I'm also suggesting, your, your evidence suggests that we didn't have cars covered to the roof.
Correct. Fair enough. I mean, if there were three-foot waves or whatnot, yes, but it would not have been. I think there's this notion that the garage during an event, even less than that, is going to have water up to the roof, and it's, it's just not true.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, kind of going back to the FEMA flood map, though, if we use that as a, as a guide, I mean, you've always, probably don't want to use it because, you know...
No, we are, we are using it.
But I'm saying, I'm just from a... But I'm saying, I'm just from a, a standpoint of emergency access vehicle. So if we go to the FEMA floodmap and we're on the 15-foot area around the back of the building and the sides that we have for drive equipment, there could be.
Well, you're never driving equipment around the.
All right, well, say you get a fireman walking.
At 15 feet, he's swimming or treading water.
Well, if it's elevation 17, he could be in five feet of water.
Yeah, yeah.
It's essentially not accessible.
He's coming to the building on a boat. I don't think anybody's disputing that.
It's not accessible, I guess is what I'm saying. They can't put up any ladders or, that's.
If, yes, if there was, if there was a storm to the 17-foot elevation, yes, that would be difficult. I would suggest that.
But you'd need a submarine to traverse the drifting.
No, but even if we get a.
The whole town is underwater at that point.
But even if we get a storm at 13-foot elevation, that's still a foot of, foot of water that there.
And fair enough, I'm, listen, it's, it was an exhibit, we've designed the FEMA floodplain, but I'm telling you, that storm, which by everybody's standards was horrible, terrible, the worst, we're just showing you the exhibit based on that.
Can I just, just so that the zoning board has, has the benefit of the record and I'm going to characterize this as, as fairly as I can because no one is accusing anyone of leading anyone down a primrose path. They did is, you requested and went to the deputy fire chief. They did have this discussion, good faith, fair discussion over what a storm that's essentially 11, 11 feet. After that discussion, I then had correspondence with the chief and we had a slightly different discussion around the 100-year floodplain. And he expressed to me, and there's apparent disconnect, I'm not saying anyone said anything or is covering up anything, the chief reported to me that that 15-foot lateral area should reflect a stable area during the flood situation, the floodplain situation. That's inconsistent with what he appears or what I'm, what is being reported to me. That disconnect I still think has to be resolved because if you design for the worst-case scenario, which is my practice when I, when I look at these things and I'm advising a board, and if, even if the chief is comfortable with putting a ground ladder and he has said, and I don't think there's any dispute over this, that he could only access three sides by a ground ladder, even if he was comfortable sloshing around in a foot of water at 16 feet, looking at this where he can have the angle for ladder, he's in eight feet of water. So that clearly would be unfeasible. So I think the thing that still has to be clarified in fairness to them, because they had a discussion and they had a result and I credit that, my discussion is different than that and Woodard and Curran is now going to look into that question as well, as is the town's planning director, Brad Washburn, because I think it has to be resolved. Are we looking at this design for emergency access from 100-year floodplain standard where the, the risk of casualty and fire is greater or are we looking at it for this year's worst storm? My general feeling is that you look at the worst-case scenario, but again, I, the, the chief is somewhat reluctant to wade into this, no pun intended, too far, but I, I have asked a more direct question that he's got to resolve because we're six, seven feet apart from each other on a design standard. Now, it's important from the standpoint that I'm sure if it was easy for them to do a 15-foot lateral area around these buildings, they, they would. They, in good faith, they have done, made design changes when you guys have asked. The problem is if you put a 15-foot lateral area that would be no worse than, say, 14 feet, which would be two feet below the, two feet or so below the floodplain level, it would encroach on the riverfront and then encroach on the other side on, I believe, the Holstein property. So it becomes a design issue for them. This issue to me has to be resolved. I'm uncomfortable with it, with the level of disconnect now. And again, I'm giving them, they went, they asked questions, they did a design based upon what they heard. I heard something very different.
Jay, when did you talk to the fire chief?
I had probably a day or so after he sent me a summary of your conversation, I asked follow-up questions.
The fire chief or the deputy?
Deputy chief.
The deputy chief.
Deputy chief.
I talked to the deputy chief on Monday. He said he had no correspondence with you.
Well, he's, I, I have it, so.
Well, that's what he said and he didn't know who you were.
Listen, I went to great lengths not to call you a liar, but that's not true.
Can I characterize, we've met with the fire department three times.
Yes, and I know Jay has spoken with him as well.
We met and sat with him and went through the plans in painstaking detail. He never, and my architect and my engineer were at the meeting with us, never once in any of those meetings said the 15 feet needs to be up. That's what the exhibit was on Monday that we did.
But he told me the same, he told me the opposite.
He also said this, he said, I, he said, I, and I wrote this down, he said, I don't care about flooding. He says, I know when it floods, there's going to be water. He says, we, they care about code, all right? And we went through the code and I, we did a code assessment. Everything about this building will be according to code. Moreover, the 15-foot not being in a FEMA floodplain is not a code requirement, it's not.
Didn't say it was. He said, he told me in an email.
And it is an existing condition.
The deputy chief with a copy to, on May 24th, to Mr. Murphy as well, said, confirmed that the perimeter of the two buildings at ground level, assuming that ground level would be the first floor, he wanted that 15 feet at that level. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, and I've been very careful not to accuse anyone of anything and I'd respectfully suggest you do the same because this is documentary.
You have that in writing?
I do. And I told you that the other day and I'm not accusing anyone of anything. You guys asked him specific questions, you applied your due diligence. I did the same, there's a different result. What I'm suggesting is that we need more information on that and then the board, as a matter of public safety, has to make a decision. Because right now, we've got like a seven-foot disconnect and that's not good for you and it's not good for us. We should work hard to resolve the question. Because right now, it's clear as a bell and John's been all, on all this correspondence because he's the chair, that he recommended what he recommended to me. I don't know how to explain it, I said that to you on, by email, Jeff, but there's, there's a big disconnect.
Can we ask the chief?
I have.
Via email, did you mean this or did you mean this?
I did expressly. I, I don't, Brad is, Brad's in the building, Brad's working with him, Woodard and Curran is trying to schedule a meeting with him.
Okay, and so, I mean, it'd just be great if they could put it in writing.
I think so. That's all, that's all I'm suggesting.
And it doesn't need to be a recommendation or endorsement, no, we would suggest one or the other and then, and then we know we can, we can skip to this part.
Can we identify Brad for viewing audience?
You had Washburn.
Brad, the town planner.
Yeah, essentially.
So the viewing audience knows who we're talking with, the town planner is engaged in this conversation.
He's not the town planner, he's, he's the coordinator.
Director.
He's a little bit different than.
Well, Jay, honestly, we don't have anything else to talk about tonight if that's an issue because.
No, I, I, from a common, from a, just a minute, just from a common sense point of view, if we, we've got a couple of different maps, but I'm asking about the 100-year floodplain map. You know, if that's, if, are we going to use that as a guideline for common sense? But I'm just, I'm just curious, how mu, you know, if we're going to ask these people that show up in an emergency, how much water are we going to ask them to go into? You know, the other thing is, yes, I realize you're in the floodplain, there, you've taken the, the picture of the, the last storm, which, you know, yeah, it was a storm, but there were circumstances that can exist that didn't exist in that storm, that will make it even higher pretty easily. You could have a cold winter, you could have a foot to 18 inches of frost or ice in the marsh, the same way that the harbor flooded, you know, a different storm, so that's why I'm asking about.
We met code, all right? If, if you ask the fire chief, does this, when we go to that, do, do you meet all applicable fire protection codes and building codes as it relates to fire safety? The answer is yes, okay? Jay is, and, and Brad are, according to what the deputy chief has told me, is trying to get the fire department to be the person to say, yes, this is unsafe. They're not going to say that. I mean, you can see what they say, but they're not going to say.
I don't know what they're going to say.
I'm asking you though, but what, what floodplain did they belong to? Is the FEMA floodmap? Doesn't exist?
Yeah, they've, they've seen everything, okay? They asked us to do this plan and then we did the plan because they were confused, they were thinking about it, what's it like during high tides is what they kept asking us, which is what the plan is that we submitted on Monday to show.
Let, let me, let me just give the benefit of kind of some legal stuff that is code or not code and, and how some of these things. There are very few cases, as we know, where, where zoning boards prevail in heated disputes and 40B matters. One of them, or two of them actually, resolve emergence, or revolve around emergency access on something that's outside of the code. Single access, long, topographically challenged roadways leading to a project, that's not code.
Totally different, Jay.
And the, all I'm saying is you're relying on code and I'm suggesting there are other standards to consider and that's good and acceptable design standards regarding emergency access. So whether it meets code or not isn't the be-all and end-all and that's all I'm suggesting. So whether or not there's a fire code that specifically references 100-year floodplain and where you put your ground ladders, isn't the issue. The issue is whether or not he feels comfortable or is challenged or there'll be a delay that could result in injury to property or persons.
Jay, that, those two cases were based on, the, the fire department couldn't access the property at all. It was bad access. They have access to the front of this building, the side of this building, it's all out of the floodplain. This is a luxury of, that they asked for behind the building.
I don't think this is a luxury.
Well, because you're trying to stop the project, so.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, he's not trying to do anything. He's not a voting member, we're the voting members. And so if you want to, there's no need to maintain that tone.
There's a, there's a major concern here that we're trying to wrap our heads around. Arguing about it or getting louder about it doesn't help anyone do that. I'm trying to put myself in a position of the firefighter, I'm not one, but if you walk around the back of this building in the conditions you've described, you're going to see water going all the way out to the Atlantic Ocean. You're not going to know how, you're not going to know the topography under that water. It may be, again, as represented, two feet or less near the building, then it goes to four feet and then it goes beyond four feet. The firefighter isn't going to know that, particularly at night. One of the concerns that we have in the town is we had, I don't think we had any life, loss of life, but in, on Humrock, we had a significant fire situation. It was a simple electrical fire, but because of the storm, because of the wind, because of the water, we lost four, three?
Four homes.
Four homes. And it could have been significantly worse. So in recent memory, we have a concern in the town. There is code, I fully understand that and your point is well-taken, but I'm trying to put myself in the position of a firefighter in this building. You say you have access to the side, yes, you do, but you have a driveway that's going down eight feet and it's a relatively tight radius for.
The front driveway?
No, the driveway going around to the side, the one that goes into the garage. You've got a retaining wall, so the, the equipment can't get up on that embankment where the retaining wall is, so I can only imagine accessing that side by bringing it, an apparatus, a vehicle, truck, down in, down a driveway and parking it on this curve and trying to stabilize it and get equipment up. And that's not, that's not the wall that I'm as concerned with. On the back of the building, because you have the garage level down to grade, it's a much higher, a much greater height to reach in a firefighting situation. And those are the sides, the back and the other side, that we don't have access. And, and that's a concern. You can tell us it's code, you can tell us it meets code, but it's a concern. As you've described the conditions, as you've put them on the plan, the storm that we had this year, when you walk around the back of that building, you're going to see nothing but water. There's not going to be any exposed ground from the building all the way to the Atlantic Ocean.
And I understand and respect your, your frustration and putting yourself in the, I hope you can appreciate mine, when we've met with the fire department three times, we met with the deputy chief and the chief three weeks ago, my engineer and architect painfully walked through all of the grades, all of the, the slopes, the entire FEMA floodplain, the tides, we talked through, we were there for an hour and a half, we talked about what we were going to do and they said, yes, that's fine, that satisfies us, you know, we're okay with the plan, we're not going to put anything in writing, that's not our style. And then we hear that they're unhappy about it after we met with them and spent all this time. So I can hope you can appreciate my frustration when we feel like we're, we're meeting with municipal staff, we're talking through the technical elements, we're giving them what we want, and then we hear that other conversations were had and he's saying something entirely different than what he said to three people, not just me taking my word, there were two other people that would vouch for what we, I sent them an email.
Again, you're suggesting, you're suggesting that there's some sort of malfeasance.
No, I'm not, but I'm just.
There's nothing going on here.
I think you, the chairman doesn't understand why I'm frustrated and that's why I'm frustrated.
I think he understands why you're frustrated.
But, but understand that this, when this project came before us initially, there were a few things we outlined specifically that we were concerned about. This was one of them. Again, I, you're, you're wedging this building in as best you can against that riverfront, 200-foot riverfront area that you can't go into. I wish you had another 50 feet behind this building where we could, where you could have access of equipment, but you don't, you've got the riverfront area. So therefore, getting 15 feet is a challenge, I guess impossible really, unless you move the building. And I, and if you move the building, then you've got into situations where you're not going to get that driveway down there. And, you know, I, I understand, but it's, these are conditions, these are challenges of your making or of the designs, of the design. And it's not, they're not challenges that we created, but they're challenges we're concerned about.
I, I have a few questions and some of them are for you, Jay, and I want the audience to hear some of this because in, in my opinion, in my understanding of the situation we and you guys are in here is if we were able to deny this because it's not a great and perfectly safe place to put a building, we would deny it and these meetings would be a lot shorter that this lot floods and it floods more than a lot of town. But this is a site where a 40B was already approved and I think those cases were more for lack of safe access in standard situations. And I think, and I welcome you disagreeing with me and showing me otherwise, that if we were to deny a development because it didn't have safe and dry access for a fire department in a 14-foot flood event, I think, and I by no means know and you know better than me, we would lose pretty quickly on that argument.
So, no one knows.
No one knows.
So in, in those cases and in the principles underlying concerns over long, single access, topographically challenged, the, the, the decisional law on that does reflect nighttime or icy or narrowed conditions. So they're, they do talk, not, not extreme events like this.
Right.
So it is not apples and apples, but some of the same principles apply. So I can't sit here and tell you and nor am I advising you to deny or approve or approve with, with conditions. I'm trying to set out some of the principles that I come across in conventional, if this was a conventional project, it would be dead on day one.
Of course.
Gone. So, which is what I was trying to flush out with, with the deputy chief. There are other elements here and one thing that is clear is that 15 feet around a building could easily be accomplished. It would mean that that building would shrink. So you, you get then into the area of where do you want to go with this? Could you then start discussing modifications that, that would address some of your concerns? You can. This is the time of the, of the hearing where you might get into that level of discussion. They're obviously pinched at that point, not so much in the rear because they could keep going backwards a little bit, they might have to do some stuff with Bill, but they could accomplish 15 feet to the east. It's to the north and the south that they have a problem. It's to the north and the south that they have a problem.
Yeah. And some of the things to...
Jay, can I ask a question just so I know? The 15 feet, though, even if we moved the building, still in the floodplain?
No, but if in fact, if in fact the chief's concern is that he needs the 15-foot perimeter in an area that has a minimal amount of water, then that can, yes, it's all still in the floodplain. But we're talking about the discrete issue of emergency access. The issue of flooding of the garage is another issue. The discrete issue of allowing access to multiple sides of building, the front building is not in as tough a situation because you've got three sides of access on top of the fill that you guys are putting in there. That doesn't seem to me, nor did it seem to the chief to the best of my ability, despite the north side being a problem, because he's got access to the other three sides better. It's the rear building on three sides that's more of an issue. So that, if 15 feet, let's call it above 12 or 13 feet, let's say it started at 12 and graded up to the 16 or the 17, to the ground floor level. You would have to buy, you would have to somehow get more land on the north and the south side. The east side, not so much, because with some adjustments perhaps to compensatory flood, you could figure that piece out. But you'd be then, without shrinking laterally, and I don't know about expanding to the east, that's up to you on the design element.
Will you help me? I mean, how are you referring to east on this plan?
The east is towards the ocean.
All right.
Basically, the bottom of the...
This area where you're...
North is up and to the right.
North?
There's a compass around on the plan.
East.
Yeah, okay, so we can't, we can't go anywhere east or north.
You could fill more land here to get, to get your...
But you would have to, you would have to shrink the footprint this way to get 15 feet here and here. I leave to the engineers whether or not you can add more fill on this side in terms of that. I don't know. And maybe the whole thing slides this way and the patio gets smaller. I don't know. I think there's a design solution on the east, probably. Again, I'll look at it to the engineers. It's the north and the south that if you were going to get more area, and I said this in an email to you, that there'd have to be a design change. And I said quite clearly to the chief, and I said it to you, that it seemed entirely possible, but it would require some modifications.
And I think also, part of our questioning tonight is not, we're not here to kill a project, but we're telling you our concerns with it. And it's not our job to design it, but it could be a case where you come up with something creative. Yes, you've tried to meet the code, and again, the minimum code, that's what it is.
Oh, the code's the code.
Yeah, but it's the minimum amount there. But we have some concern, the question about this there, whether it's, you know, you look into outdoor sprinklers on certain sites that they don't have access to, that might help. Where you raise part of it to give you a little more access over here, so they shorten the distances here. Whatever those things are, these are our concerns. That's why we're asking you to come up with some ideas to help us on that. Aside from...
I understand that, and we will continue to endeavor to do that, but I mean, the reason I'm frustrated is I thought we had, we had this meeting two weeks ago, and we thought, like walking out of that meeting, we all, the three of us looked at each other and said, we have to redo a regrading, you know, which we submitted, you know? So then I heard this other, so we'll look at it again, okay? I'm not, I'm frustrated, but I'm not defeated, and we'll look at it.
So to perfect the record, and I told you this, the contents of my conversation with the deputy chief a week ago because I thought it was important that you hear it. I'll just say, so the chief, in response to like, he reached out to me afterwards because he knew I was helping the board. We raised our concern that we would only be able to reach upper levels of the building on three sides with 35-foot ground ladders, and that a level or slightly graded width of firm terrain approximately 15 wide surrounding the building would be required to accomplish this task. We were told this could be accomplished, and that even at an astronomically high tide of 12 feet or more, which is more than 11, floodwaters would not impinge on the perimeter. So I asked him. I said, as to the stabilized space for ground ladders, I trust you mean a perimeter that is above the floor level so that you can place your ladders easily. Let me know. Assuming that is the case, that would obviously, they would obviously need to expand the area of fill, especially behind the rear building. That is likely possible, but will have to be reviewed by the engineers and wetlands people. And then he said, yes. I was referring to the perimeter of the two buildings at ground level, assuming the ground level would be at the first floor level. So...
Is this an email?
This is in the email.
Why didn't you forward this to us?
Why, am I under some kind of, I told you exactly what he said.
You did not...
If I made a point of order, Stephanie Kiefer, on behalf of the applicant, since the last hearing, I have asked on at least two occasions for all correspondence, communications, whatnot, with this project. We're now learning tonight, and I think this is a large source of our frustration, that there were communications with the deputy fire chief and Jay that the chair was included on or copied on, and Jay, you had said earlier, Annie. I just don't understand why this isn't part of the record when I made specific requests.
Making it part of the record. I outlined all of this.
Not to that detail, Jay, not close to that.
Said exactly what he said, that it should all, the 15 feet should be out of the floodplain.
This should not be the case.
Jay, you didn't, not to that. I mean, there's some important information in that, what you just read, that you told me, this is what you told me, that the chief said he wanted the 15 feet out of the floodplain.
That's what he said. Yes, I was referring to the perimeter of the two buildings at ground level, assuming that ground level would be their first floor level. That's out of the floodplain.
No, and then you go on to say astronomical high tide.
It was his prior email, and then I emailed to confirm what he was talking about, and that's what he confirmed. That's exactly what I relayed to you. I didn't hide anything.
Jay, but the...
Shouldn't we have shared that email with them?
I'm having a conversation with the chief. A week ago, I shared that exact info with them.
Well, but, but I...
Not a public, listen, I don't get public records requests, and there was no public records request to me. Annie delivers the communications in fairness, and Annie's not doing anything wrong either.
No, I certainly didn't mean to imply that she was doing anything wrong, and I think that it's a learning experience for all involved, but you having a conversation with the fire chief, that makes sense to me. But when that conversation becomes a conversation with the chair and the secretary, and they're making requests, shouldn't we be sharing that? Is there a reason to not?
That's why I did, I emailed them to give them this...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My emails, first of all, arguably not disclosable at all.
I fully understand that.
Attorney speaking to someone who's on a...
I fully understand that. But when it, when it comes to a correspondence with another department of town about the subject, if you're saying we shouldn't...
Still attorney-client, still attorney-client, and, but I, in good faith, I wanted them to know a week ago. I didn't have to tell them anything.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking, I was honestly asking.
Yeah, still, all my correspondence would, not with the email correspondence, not with anyone who's not a client. I thought it was important that they had the benefit of what I heard.
Where, in your opinion, does correspondence between you and the chief that becomes correspondence between you and the chief and us cross over into open meeting concerns?
Never.
Okay. I was asking.
Which is why...
If I had an opinion on it, I'd say I had an opinion on it.
But I still felt it was important to share it with them because they're working...
I understand.
And look, I get, I've consistently said that they have been responsive and courteous and cooperative. And I said in further correspondence, no one was suggesting they were trying to confuse or trick the chief or the board or anything. They went with them with the plan, and I, the chief clearly didn't communicate things the same to both of us, and that's fair. So I understand their frustration, which is why I think we have to resolve it.
Yeah, I honestly, that way, I don't think I agree, I disagree with you. I don't think I disagree with you, but I think it was worth asking the question and worth, worth asking the question on the record, especially giving their comments.
I never, I mean, I never, as a rule, share my correspondence with clients.
That makes sense, generally in the legal profession.
I think that's the important thing. The information in the correspondence was shared directly.
Not...
Well, I'm sorry, Jeff, but you were, earlier you were saying that, suggesting that Jay was making stuff up, as much as said it, and he's not. He's, unless he's telling him, unless he's misleading us now, he had a conversation, with the intent at least, to share the information that was gleaned from emails that he had with his client. I don't think it's prudent that email correspondence with town boards and this board's attorney should be routinely shared as documents. That doesn't make sense. I mean, I don't think, Jay, I mean, Jeff, you want to share your correspondence with your attorney with us? I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
And I mentioned the open meeting law, to be clear, there wasn't discussion. There, you had an email conversation, and then you shared that email conversation with us. We did not, I didn't participate in the discussion. I don't think anyone did. And I understand, and I understand.
And the chair...
I wanted to understand.
I always kept advising what's going, but it's not communicated to us until we're here.
I'm forgetting whether what Jay said or didn't say, or whatever, what's done is done. I'm still not clear on what the direction is.
Well, perhaps...
And I don't think the fire chief, with all, I've met with him three times. Jay's talked to him on the phone. I don't think he's going to provide clear direction, and if I went and had a meeting with him again, I think he would tell me something different than what he's telling Jay.
I'm frustrated too by that, Jeff, because, again, I take you at face value. We have reached out to him again, and Woodard and Curran and Mr. Washburn are reaching out to him to, to get clarity on his position. I think that clarity will be very valuable.
But this board can make a condition that there be 15-foot at ground level, free of water, and a 17-foot, or in a...
Whatever.
Well, 14-foot tide. I mean, we can make that condition with or without the advice of the fire department. I mean, if the fire department says, this is the minimum we need, and we want to make it a greater amount, we can't. So let's...
That's, and I think that's important, is, I'm not, we don't need the fire chief to say, no, that's not enough. We can, in our opinion, say that it's not enough. Now, I think the point that Jay was making before, and the point that I think is important, if the implications of that determination run afoul of 40Bs nature and case law, we might not want to make that condition.
No, I think it's certainly within the type of condition, the...
But what it does to economic feasibility and...
Analysis of economic feasibility, and we wouldn't know that until we saw how it would impact. It would shrink, and maybe not, because there's still wetland permitting involved here. It has the potential for shrinking the footprint, but maybe not even that rear building, that it may have to be reoriented, but they may not lose a single unit. I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I think the big mystery there would be what would happen on the eastward throw of that building, not so much on the north and the south. The north invokes more permitting. That doesn't mean it's not feasible, because you're, some conservation commissions will allow you to work in the outer riparian zone to a riverfront. The south is an issue because I think they'd run out of land before they had grading issues with the Holstein property. So, but their design, which I, I've consistently suggested that there are design remedies here, where they would lose, they would have to change something, but it's unknown as to whether or not it would impact financial feasibility. But this kind of back and forth, I think, is helpful because if it does require modification, that's, that's what we do. At the end of technical review, we have these discussions over requested modifications.
I mean, I know we as a board are still concerned with that, that access. I mean, if you need to meet with the fire chief, we'll certainly, one or two of us will certainly be glad to meet with them as well at the same time, so we all hear the same thing, out of the same person, clarification rather than he said, she said. There, we could make...
Probably a good idea.
Make that arrangement to, because this is a concern all four of us have.
Can I respectfully ask that Jay send us what he read me?
I will. I'll send you that chain.
Tipe it up, or send me the chain or whatever.
I'll forward those, there's two emails, there are three emails total. I'll forward those to you, because I've disclosed them now, so that is fair.
Because I'm still not totally, I mean, I know generally what you're getting at, but I'm not precisely comfortable on the elevation of that 15 feet, because the FEMA floodline has been mentioned, 14 feet has been mentioned, the astronomical high tide has been mentioned.
First, elevation of first floor has been mentioned, and I don't know if that's the garage or the first floor of the habitability. And if it's first floor of habitability, across the whole north side of the building, you don't have that.
Well, that's silly. I mean, that's an elevation 23.
I understand, but here's my point, is you've got 15 feet, and if you're not at, and if the fire chief is thinking he needs 15 feet to go up two stories, and you've got a whole story of parking garage, maybe he needs 20 feet for the ladder to have the pitch that he needs. I don't know.
Yes, it may depend.
He specifically said 15. I mean, that wasn't...
But again, he's, he's referencing at least in...
That's the lateral, not the, we're talking about two different numbers, 15 feet wide. If he's at eight feet above elevation, and what's the eve height? Or...
Forty, yeah, whatever.
Oh, 62 in the middle.
So I don't know, I don't know, I mean, they're carrying those by hand, so it's...
In the, in the text you read, I believe it said that he was at first floor elevation.
Yes.
And if he's thinking it's first floor elevation around the back of the building, where there's 15-foot lateral availability of space is, and in fact, he is eight feet below first floor elevation, that may make that 15 have to be bigger in order to accommodate a ladder. And again, it's, they're hand-carrying a ladder around two, on three sides of this second building, when I would like to see them be able to get a truck out there and get a bucket up there and get people down if they need to. Again, fire is, this is safety, this is, I'm not going to be living there, I don't think. You're not going to be living there, I don't think.
We need a decision for the people who are living there.
Fine, point noted.
Let me just indicate, we will meet with the fire chief, Bob Engler.
Okay.
We'll meet with the fire chief with Jay. We'll find out how serious these issues are, and we're willing to look at design modifications to the degree that we can do them to satisfy him if that's what we're hearing. If we're hearing something different, we'll review something different. But I think that's the first step. The second step is how much can we do? We've already looked with Woodard and Curran at all the things we've looked at, but if you want something on the sides of these buildings, we'll hear from the chief first, in person, and then we'll do something, and then we'll come back and be done with it. If we can't do anything more than we have, we'll tell you that. If we can do something, we'll do something. And then we'll hopefully put it to rest, and you can vote however you want.
Yeah, and I think, Bob, I think Woodard and Curran is basically satisfied on just about everything. I don't know if any of these modifications, that they would seem to me to be minor in nature, would affect any kind of the drainage stuff or not, probably minimally.
If it affects any of that, we'll have to have them look at it to the degree that it's...
But I don't think anyone is suggesting that that, we're not past the technical review that they've done. They've managed to check all the boxes with the modifications that SciTech is, and the clarification SciTech had.
So we'll coordinate through the chair relative to, I mean, if it's Jay, if it's a member of the board, it's obviously your call. We'll coordinate through the chair and try to find some days and times and set up a meeting.
Yep. We can, will you be available?
Yeah, I'll try and make myself, if that makes sense, Jeff.
Well, like anything, we'll have to identify some days and times that can work for everybody. I mean, they're usually, you know, call them on a Friday, and you identify next Wednesday, Thursday, Fri, you know? It's not like some people, you're two or three weeks out, but it's also not, can you meet tomorrow? So we'll get it done.
And it may be better for cost perspective on the town, that maybe it's Brad. I just think there needs to be representatives from both sides.
It should not be Brad. Brad has not been at any of the hearings. He's not been as involved as you. He doesn't have the context. It should not be Brad, respectfully.
No, I'm just trying to be sensitive to the town's costs too here.
Yeah.
And your costs as well, because you'd be paying for, if it's Woodard and Curran, you'd be paying for them too.
But why would it be Woodard and Curran?
Because they can communicate on these things too. You guys brought people from SciTech.
Yeah, but we brought people from SciTech because it was talking about grading. I mean, maybe, all right, maybe it is...
I don't know, I'm perfectly happy to go. I just don't want to cost anyone any more money than is necessary.
Well, if it means paying, us paying, you know, for a couple hours of Scott's time or Dan, you know, to go to the meeting, we'll do that.
You know, I'll...
John, yeah, John's available, so.
That's great.
I mean, we can narrow the issue down. John's available, so, I mean, we can narrow the issue down as much as possible for the Fire Department's benefit. I think it is a pretty narrow issue already, so...
And the Fire Department can watch us on TV.
Get updated.
Available on YouTube.
Were there any other concerns? It seems like, as far as the emergency vehicle access, we're going to put that off to our next meeting. So, any other issues?
We don't have anything else.
All right. Well, I'm asking the board members if...
I thought you looked at me.
Well, let me look at you. Any other issues or questions that we need tonight? We've gone over the evacuation plan and the emergency access plan.
I had a question quickly on the lighting, because we went over it pretty quickly in a prior, is, am I right that they're not asking for relief on lighting, so they would have to comply with the town's code on lighting?
I believe so.
Yeah. I don't know what those requirements are, take a look at it, but you'd have to find the closest parallel. I mean, it's a dark, we will have conditions regarding dark sky requirements and other elements.
The town's bylaw covers quite a bit of that, too.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll put it, I have a bunch of standard things on, a final set of plans will come in post-permit, and those will get reviewed for compliance with the dark star, dark sky requirement, and all downward lighting and all that. All that gets refined more frequently post-permit than pre-permit.
Bob, did you have anything you need to add?
I do some research around this also. It's an interesting conversation for me, as it draws in FEMA requirements, it draws in code requirements, and of course, draws in the requirements the Fire Department would like to see fulfilled. So, with your permission, I'm not going to say anything for a moment, but like I said, I'd like to do a little study on this and try and get a hold of where we're at, where we might be going.
I missed the, I apologize. I missed the first part of...
He's going to, from his code perspective, and is kind of the eyes and ears of flood plain stuff in town, he's going to take a look at the question himself.
So, you know, at the next meeting, or prior to the next meeting, I'll try and have some cogent thoughts about where we might be going with this.
Fine, thank you. And then I'm going to open up to the audience, if there are any questions.
Yes, just state your name and address, please.
Patricia Collins, 385 Front Street Way.
Thank you.
Now, first, I'd like to just thank the board for bringing up the emergency access. I'm the mother of the paramedic firefighters, one of them who works for the town in Situ with, who also responded to the 2010 fires on 11th Avenue that they were unable to access because of floodwaters. And he also responded to the Hummer fire, where there were four houses that were dug to the ground. This is a huge issue. Those are big trucks. They need to be able to access property for, hopefully, not loss of life, whether they are firefighters or residents of this community. So, I'm very pleased that the board is looking at this issue, because that means that my three sons and my three grandchildren, who are dependent on their fathers, would be protected. So, this is a major concern for me, and I'm sure for the rest of the town.
Thank you.
Kathy Don, are you Cushing-Landy? I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Engler said, I think he talked about the tide at the January 4th storm, he talked about an 11-something-foot tide. A lot of moon tides at 11 and a half feet, so I, and I know that on the globe, after the January 4th storm, the height of the tide in Situ was documented at 15.46. So, 11 feet is an average tide. It's no big deal around here anymore.
Yeah, I think tides go from slack, or, no, I'm not using the right term, but tides go from, they go below and they go above. He's talking about water reaching a certain elevation of land.
I'm in the neighborhood, and I can tell you, because when the FEMA maps came in, all of our houses, and they gave the flood elevation at 16, and a lot of our houses then became involved with the FEMA regulations that hadn't been prior to. So, we know what 11-foot tide looks like, it fills the marsh. This tide on that day came up into yards. It was not an 11-foot tide, and in fact, FEMA did, the government did say that it was a 15.46 tide.
Again, I'm agreeing with you. The 11 that he was giving us was water coming to an elevation of 11 feet, which is different than a 15-foot tide.
Greater than an elevation of 11 is what I'm explaining.
Oh, okay, then that's absolutely...
We know from previous storms, all of us that have lived there a long time, we know what an 11-foot tide, where it comes to. This came well up into yards. It flooded many more houses that were well over an 11-foot average tide than it happened twice. And it's happened twice. The other thing is that, what we were, the other thing on the, it talked about an annual review of a contract on, with the town and the whoever would be in charge of that.
Management company? The management company?
Management. So, who would be the one that would, every March 1st, ensure that that document was updated, or whatever it was? Who was responsible?
That's part of, we haven't, that has been finalized yet. Who we assign that to, whether it be part of the building, annual inspection of the building department, something that is required to be sent in, we'll have to determine that.
Okay. Can a tow truck get into the garage?
I'm not sure of the height, if they can. We could, I could find out by the next meeting.
Because you're, we're all assuming that, I think, if anyone that's lost their keys knows that the keys to the newer cars cost about a hundred or so dollars. So, everyone would have to have like a third set of keys to go with the, go with the management company for every car they buy, or rent, or lease, or whatever. So, I think it's, it's, it sounds good that everybody would be up to date on every car they have. So, as soon as they bought the car, they'd get that third set of keys to make sure that they were in the management company. And I don't know if that's practical, to expect that. And I don't, did this plan address the fact that the parking meadow or the septic field would have to be flooded all winter long?
Yes, we had discussed that early, so at some point, that would have to be constantly maintained, ready ahead of time, not at the emergency date.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I think the tow truck, we were wondering, you know, if someone, it's assumed that everybody would be able to get a car, and might have an extra set of keys, but if not, then we'd want to know that a tow truck could get in there and get those cars out before they caused trouble, because as we all in the area know, you know, their brain to their, to their garage is our marshland that's valuable to the entire community.
Right, and it could be, yeah, there are a couple types of tow trucks, we'd have to look into that, whether it's a flatbed type or a larger type.
Right, okay. Because I knew that was going to be a tight thing, that would be, but thank you. I think you've addressed a lot of the concerns of the neighbors, and we can document this, you know, this is a real tidal issue. And in fact, it was brought up that they expect the tides to go up two feet within, by 2046. So, we know that whatever we're addressing today is going to get worse and not better. And I think that's something that we're all concerned about. We've seen things this last year that we never expected. We never saw Front Street flood like that, and some of these other things, and even our own yard. So, I think we need to deal with this one. Because of the developer squeezing every bit on that narrow parcel, then he, there's no flexibility. There's not an extra square foot to hope that there's, say, additional parking, recreation. There's nothing extra. So, what he gets determined now is, there's no, there's no way of fixing it 10 years down the road. And just for Anthony, for your point, this is a completely different plan than the previous plan. The previous plan had no under, no parking. It was a larger site. The buildings were smaller. There were more affordable units. They were shorter.
Well, wait, wait, I'm sorry. I'm aware of some of that, some of that's good information, but there weren't more affordable units.
I think the percentage was the same, the number was...
There's 60 unit, we can go back to 60. Also, there were 100...
120...
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, I didn't mean to...
You don't want to go there.
And ma'am, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it's a little more complicated that this is a smaller project in terms of a number of units.
It's a smaller project, and it's more vulnerable to the environment.
You're absolutely right.
Okay, so, we, you know, it is a different project. So, they are going for changes on the previously approved. However, if you compare the two, they're apples and oranges. And FEMA has come in and said this area is even more dangerous than it was 14 years ago. So, we're dealing with something very serious.
Absolutely.
And there's no, there's no ifs on this deal. We can't change anything once we give them the okay. We're all stuck. And just one other point.
We've got some other hands we want to get to as well.
So, last meeting, everyone was, they were discussing the berm that, on the south side, how that directed water. And then we were all assured that the ocean was infinite, and it could absorb this small cubic, 130,000 cubic yards of fill. This whole project is actually a berm. So, on the north side, it is a berm, it diverts water. And all the neighbors that say that this project will affect their property are correct, because it is, this berm will cause the water that has always gone to this coastal plain and been absorbed by that, it will be redirected someplace else, and we haven't addressed that fact. But if it's a berm on the south side, it's a berm on the north side.
You know, I think the berm was, in regards to, not for salt water, but for rainwater.
Same, but same concept, larger...
No, but I just, so, we, differentiation...
Yes, I'm sorry, correct. Thank you.
Yes.
Frank Kilduff, 125 Chief Justice Cushing. I'm frustrated too. So what? You know, anybody who wants to come in and maximize their profit with the biggest project they can fit on the land, too bad if they're frustrated. I think our rights as citizens have been pretty much abrogated by the state with 40B. We're hogtied, we can't do very much. So, knowing that, feeling that, my request to you is that you maximize aggressively conditions, so that as much mitigation to the town and to myself and my neighbors can be accomplished with what little power you have. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes.
Phyllis Carver, 26 Hughes Road. I want to just, literally, as a mariner in town for the last 55 years, and Eddie and these guys know, the tide situation is not pretty around here. At least six months a year, we have 12-foot tides running for four days, okay? You take the wind, and you take any sea conditions, and it easily makes it a 14-foot with the 12 with a two-foot surge. And the tide waters going up, you guys have got to think, you know, 20 years down the road, because you've got one shot at this. And if you're not thinking of a regular 14-foot tide, or 13-foot tide with a two-foot surge plus, then this project will be underwater. So, I would urge you to take into consideration those tidal changes also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mike Higgins, 12 Moore Circle. I was on the Prince William County Service Authority, which is the largest sewer and water authority east of the Mississippi. And our largest problem in Prince William County down in Virginia, I was down there for 26 years. So, our largest problem was these large septic systems that are built by private enterprises. We found that over, after 25 years, about 75% or more of these systems failed, or were failing as a result of changing code, and the homeowners were not in positions to take over and do the necessary upgrades, because there was never any maintenance of these systems at all, there was never any funding of it. And the result was, the county got to own all these systems over multiple years. To the point where they finally started putting into the code, especially for homeowners associations, that they had to include maintenance fees and a separate account to be able to maintain these systems over the long run, given that the environmental requirements change continuously, and if you don't stay up with it, and especially on the sensitive area where they're building these systems, if you don't stay up on it, you're going to own this system in 25 years. You're going to own it. The towns, we're going to own it. So, I don't know how you accommodate that within the code, or how you accommodate that within the plans. The second thing is, down in Virginia, just like Florida, is the land of HOAs. And there is a specific law in Virginia that was passed about 30 years ago, that required that all new buyers got the homeowners association complete bylaws, as well as all encumbrances on that property, because they found that many buyers were going in completely blind to what their requirement's going to be, and what their total cost of ownership was going to be over the long run, and that they would be responsible for these septic systems, wells, private wells, to go into the whole processes. And when they did that, they saw a complete turnaround in the way that these associations were being run, not by Mary Jane and her brother, but by professional associations, because they would drive that type of accommodation to make sure that people coming into the associations were paid for. But I think it's valuable, especially given this is a small town, unless you want to own these systems, you know, you've got to be able to accommodate growth, and you've got a mandate that they maintain. I mean, I'm as a homeowner, you know, I'm not going to come to, I can't come, I can't come to the town and say, you know, "Could you put sewer all the way down to Moore Circle, because my septic system's failing?" That's not an option. What's going to happen when these number of units here all suddenly fail, and they find out that they're responsible for it, but they can't pay? So, I just want to, I'm concerned about the infrastructure that's going in, that you're not looking 25, 30 years down the road without the cost impact of what the town's going to have.
Yes.
Warren Broll, 15 Miles' Line. I do think that access road is a great idea. That's what the fire chief needs. I don't understand why, with a new building that's being developed, why there isn't a road required, so trucks and the firemen can access that. I mean, just the idea of having firemen sloshing around in water in the middle of the night just seems absolutely absurd, trying to rescue people when you have the opportunity to design a building and put a road at that 23-foot elevation all the way around, so a lot of truck can go there. If it's a difference of losing a few units, big deal. But the safety of firemen, safety of people, the building, and the tenants themselves is definitely required, I think. And again, the flooding issues, the flooding, the flooding, the flooding is incredible in this area. People have no idea unless they live there and see it come in. I would never buy the idea that the ocean is infinite. If you put a rock, a big boulder like this in the North River, where's the water going to come when it comes up the North River? It doesn't rise up or back up, correct? It goes around the boulder and onto properties. And that's what this is. It's a giant river when that tide comes in.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh, hi, Suzanne Walsh-Mankiewicz. I live on Farm Road. I was just, I've been before the board before, with my own personal thing, and I was just wondering, with 470.9 in the Doherty case, and Walsh on Farm Road, this project was brought up years ago, and has been in the works. But with case law like Doherty, and with other, with Walsh, why are we not paying attention to the flood zone, and putting, the first responders are going to be at risk? I personally evacuated my home three separate events this winter, and I think it's foolish to think that the Fire Department and police are not going to be at risk. And the intent of 40B was not to have people evacuate their homes, and be homeless for several days, and have to live in shelters. I think the board needs to reconsider, and the environment's being harmed, there is the Doherty case, and let it go to the Supreme Court, and let them bite us, because, I'm sorry that they've been working on it for so many years, and it's cost them thousands of dollars, but it's not great for the environment, it's not right, it's not safe for the people. And we have Doherty and Walsh, and I think people need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those, that has been brought up at the meetings as well.
It was brought up.
It was a shame that I had to pay thousands of dollars to bite it, when we know that Farm Road floods, we know this property floods, and it comes in fast. And you can have a garage, you can have keys, but ultimately, it never goes as planned. You know, every year, there's bikes, mopeds, lawn mowers, it costs thousands to live in the flood zone. And to develop property that's, we know floods, and we know the water comes in fast, it's wrong, and it's a shame. And I think it should go to the Supreme Court, it's wrong. And every year, it's getting worse. My house is 117, and... Sorry.
No. You know, I just want, I haven't said...
You know, I just want, I haven't said a lot tonight, which is kind of unusual. But I want to, first of all, thank you for coming. You, you know, it's great that you're here, because you were talked about, the very first meeting, the case, Doherty case was brought up. When this first project was first permitted, we didn't have the benefit of the Doherty case. And that it was further tested by the Walsh case, I always call it the Foam Road case. And in fact, the judge who decided the Foam Road case was Judge Frank Ozziano. He's a Cituat resident, he's now on the State Supreme Court. You know, it may well end up there, but to me, it is the single most important issue, the flooding in general and the issues and the safety concerns behind flooding. The protection of health, the safety of people, the loss of property, the tremendous cost, the tremendous risk that we ask our first responders to endure as they are saving, trying to save people who have made a choice when we have a floodplain in place, but somebody's made a choice to build there. We're not talking about houses that have sat in the floodplain, which is, now we know is the floodplain, in Cituat, some of them for hundreds of years. These are, this is a brand-new development. And despite the conversation, I hope nobody thinks this is, this is, the decision's not been made on this case. The decision, you know, is still under consideration. I can tell you right now, if we don't have something that is safe, I'll never vote for it. And you know what? If Hack has to tell me that I should have voted for it, then they'll tell me that. And if all of you end up paying appellate fees as a result of that, I hope you will appreciate that I'm sharing in those space with you. But this certainly is a much better project than it was 14 years ago when I first saw it. The applicant has done what they could on this, but it's still in the floodplain, and it's an issue that's not resolved. So, thank you all for coming out.
Can I ask a quick question on that point as, because, let's just, because your point's well-taken, it's in the floodplain, and that's not going to change. But I don't want to engage in the next three or four weeks in a major redesign, which I'm willing to do, and possibly satisfy all, even if it is a new elevation for the perimeter around the, and go through that whole process if the board is just going to say, you know, I don't like it, or I'm not comfortable with it and I'm not supporting it. I don't know if it's fair for me to ask the board, but let's just say hypothetically, I come back with the plan that satisfies the fire department. We spent $30,000 on Woodard and Curran relative to them opining on the flooding issues, and they said we have satisfied all of the concerns. And the situation in some cases will actually be better, I know people don't believe it, but in no situation will it be worse. So, I'm only saying that I'm prepared to continue and come back hopefully with something pretty profound. But if the position is, you know, we're going to court, then I don't want to spend the next month going through that process if it really doesn't matter, I guess that's what I'm saying.
No, we're not, first of all, no, we're not looking to go to court. We're looking to hopefully come up with a resolution to our concern, I think, which is.
Appreciate that.
That's why Sarah carefully said the improvements that have been made between this project and the previous project 14 years ago. And there's been continual improvements made and questions answered. A lot of stuff that we've started with are off the board now. We're now down to a few items in areas that we have a concern about, so we're trying to get those answered and resolved so that we can.
I appreciate that.
Make a decision.
Thank you.
Chair, what's the vote that have to be, is it unanimous?
No, it's a majority, simple, it's not a supermajority.
Yes.
Marsha Klein, 146. I just want to make one comment. This young man has continually talked about how much money he's spent and all the money he's spent. We've all spent our money. And as a result of the flood that happened in January, both in January, I did spend a lot of money out of my pocket due to everything that was lost during the storm. It was not as great as $30,000, it was perhaps a third of it. But that's still my money that I spent out of my pocket due to flood damage. So, I think it's sort of apples and oranges when he says something like that. You consider all the neighbors and their problems, we are the neighbors to that project, and we, it's our concerns he's never fully addressed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think he's quite aware of the cost of doing business, so.
But I think, you know, he's always saying how, you know.
I know.
I think we're all spending money.
Yes, one other.
Jamie Mankiewicz, Foam Road, Cituat. I was wanting to just answer this question from me, Chair. 470.9 says about the suitability of the floodplain. And we, the town of Cituat, the residents went to a town meeting and voted for 470.9, saying that the only way you can build in a district that floods is that you prove that it doesn't actually flood. And it does. So, how can the ZBA vote yes on something that the town of Cituat says no to? How can you go above, beyond your scope and vote for something that's not, that's not, that's in the bylaw that says you can't do it?
That's what we'll.
Because it doesn't make sense. Can you just make up anything?
No, there's an answer. We've had the same question.
Because Chapter 40B says they can request a waiver. That's what Chapter 40B is.
And more so, Chapter 40B requires us to give a waiver unless, and that's what we're looking at.
Right.
We're looking at the unlesses. If we can say in certain ways and convincingly through the Housing Appeals Court and other judiciary bodies that there is a safety issue that warrants us not giving that waiver, then we can successfully defeat the advantages that 40B gives a developer. If we can't, and it doesn't have to be safety, there are other areas, then they get to not abide by the code.
Okay, and by having the fire chief say that you only can get to one section of the building, not the other back, the other side.
That's a valid point, that's what we're talking about.
There is a fire, you know the fire, our firefighters are going to drive right through the water to save lives.
100% valid.
And so here we have a $3 million ladder truck going through saltwater.
We have to get the answers to those first before we can, that portion of the plan isn't finalized, so we need to give them the right to address that.
I also want to make it real clear here, John did not speak for me that he didn't want to litigate. I don't want to litigate, but I'm willing to litigate if that's required. I'm trying to be fair to the applicant, I'm trying to consider the health and safety of this town that I care very much about. I think that it's very difficult for me to stand here and look at the Mankiewitzes and Mary Ann Doherty, who I was against, you know, when she took her case both to the planning board and the zoning board, and I was absolutely against her getting that permit because of what 470 said. We ultimately didn't make the decision in zoning because we withdrew it because they had the planning board. But the SJC said, if it floods, you don't get to build. They can ask for a waiver, they're entitled to ask for a waiver, it's hard pressed to get it from me. I haven't absolutely, because I think it's wrong to say today, but if Jeff was taking my temperature, I think you know where I'm going with it. So, ask Jay. You know, I'm not a deciding vote in this perhaps, but I don't want anybody on this board thinking that they know how I'm going to vote, and I don't want any of you thinking that you know how I'm going to vote. You know where I'm headed, but it is an order.
Well, I appreciate that, but that was kind of my point in that, and it's not, you've spoken and the chairman's spoken and spoken, I think, differently than your feeling. And listen, I know we're not best buddies, but in fairness, I was just saying, I don't want to go through another month of a fruitless exercise when you've made up your mind. I would also say, and you guys know this because you've sat on 40Bs, and we've seen this in other decisions, where boards write in, you know what, 40B sucks and we hate it, but it's the law of the land and here's the best decision we could make. And it's, I think, your responsibility to understand what that statute is and to operate within it, and not to operate subjectively or something that you feel, you know, if it's not in accordance to what the law says.
It's not about, you know, no, I'm not sure if exactly what you said kind of relates to me, but I've, I have, I may be the only, I know maybe Ed has voted for 40Bs. We approved a 40B this year in.
I think we all did.
One night, two nights?
Two nights.
Okay? It's not 40B that I got a problem with, it's building in the floodplain I have a problem with. And the floodplain is, whoever out there said, I think it was Jamie who said, this town voted, they have a policy about avoiding building in the floodplain. And we have documents in this case that said the floodplain, the flood has risen five feet in the last 15 years. All over this Commonwealth, people are talking about buying out homes that are in the floodplains, preventing people from building in the floodplains. It's a course, a measured course of conduct and future planning for cities and towns that are on the coast that have to look at. It's costing, you know, to be in a flood is great, tremendous personal cost, financial losses to people who live there. That's, if that was all it was, that's easy. I'm worried about people dying because they, I know, don't roll your eyes, Jeff, at me, because it's true. People die in floods because first responders cannot get to them. People die in fires because first responders can't get to them. And if we have a plan here, if you have a plan here that puts the ability of our first responders to get to those people and puts their lives at jeopardy to get to those people, that's a concern, a huge concern for me.
I understand that, and I'm not saying, and I'm saying that's something, but I'm saying hypothetically, we address that, our building is still in the floodplain. Mind you, our residential level, the floodplain could increase another five feet and our residential level is still above the floodplain. And I think that's important to understand. I'm just saying if people or you feel passionate because it's in the floodplain, take the first responders out of it. Let's say we satisfy the fire department, but because of what you just said, you think building in the floodplain is wrong, that is, according to 40B, it's not. That's the point I'm making. 40B says it's okay, so for you to take that opinion, it's refuting, you know, what the law says.
Let's be clear, and I'm not going to get engaged in an argument, 40B doesn't say that.
Well, not specifically, no.
And there's all kinds of, 10 years ago, the FEMA reg said no building in a floodplain. So, I don't think that that argument is helpful. And I understand what you're saying there, that 40B gives you extraordinary power over local bylaws that might provide an additional layer of protection over what we see out there. It's all tied up in federal standards and what kind of building you're doing. You've done a great job, you've worked really closely with Woodard and Curran on drainage issues and the issues that come up under engineering standards. These are kind of slightly different issues, and they're dealing with it. You have absolute authority to ask for this waiver, and they have absolute authority to consider the public safety things, and we know that the track record at the Housing Appeals Committee is that the HAC is probably not as interested in those issues sometimes as towns would like them to be, or more willing to overturn them. We get, that's all clear.
Fair enough, I'm done, fair enough.
And folks, I think one of our responsibilities, or whatever you want to call it, is to tell you where we're coming from. And I appreciate Sarah's point and I agree with a lot of it, and I'll be the first to admit, I hate 40B. I think affordable housing is important, and allowing developers to do what they want with their property is important too. 40B, I have a lot of trouble with it. But if we say no, and they win and get to, and our no gets overturned, our conditions aren't in the conversation. So, it's not just we're willing to spend the money because we don't want them to build this and we're willing to spend the money even if it looks like we're going to lose. If we say no, our conditions aren't there to be overturned. If we say yes with conditions, some of those conditions can be overturned and some of those conditions can be upheld. That's important to keep in mind, especially on a project where the Housing Appeals Committee has said yes before. Different project, 100%, but we're not just at risk of spending the money and losing, we're at risk of losing the ability to put conditions on this project. That's something important to keep in mind. And I don't mean to say that that means we should vote yes or we should vote no, but it's something I'm aware of, and Jay, was that accurate?
It is.
And it's something I want all you to be aware of. It's not just we're willing to spend the money and time and potentially lose, we're losing out on the ability to rein in some things potentially if we just say no, even if we think that that's right on moral or traditional or code and town grounds. It's something important to consider, I want us and you guys to go into that with eyes wide open.
All right, last question.
I agree with what you're saying.
Just your name.
My name is Pat Collins, 285 Countryway.
Thank you.
And I agree with what you're saying, but if it means that the development itself has to shrink so that the first responders can't get around it, that is necessary. But I think all of us understand that, I don't want to say that 40B is a bad thing, but 40B is like a Trojan horse. We all agree that we need affordable housing in Cituat. A lot of people here tonight grew up in Cituat, their children live in Cituat, their grandchildren live in Cituat, and some of them, their parents grew up in Cituat. We want our family's babies to stay here, we want affordable housing. But we're not stupid either, 40B is nothing more than a Trojan horse in a lot of respects. They're here because they want to make money, and that's fine, that's what America's all about. But if the development has to shrink to be sure that the first responders and the tenants who are going to purchase these properties will be safe, and I'm not quite sure how the property manager, one person, is going to move, say, 40 cars. I mean, there's going to be parking for 77 if we get a winter storm and half the residents are in Florida, so let's say 35 cars. How is one person going to move 40, 35 cars? I don't understand that either. But that's just me at this. That was reality.
Okay.
I'll be the last one. Mike Collins, 24 Martha's Lane. I have an idea that I think should be considered. Mr. Mortson still owns the property, they're not going to take control until they get the approvals. Has the town approached Mr. Mortson about settling this thing? And I'm on the housing authority, we're building 30 units behind Central School, we're just waiting for money from the state, from the feds. Could there be some contact or some kind of deal made where the town could buy the property, you know, at a reduced price, CPC money, put elderly housing on the uplands in the back, you know, have CPC conservation, kick in money for that? You know, it's a thought.
So, two things. One, we can't start negotiating with Mr. Motzkin because he has a contract with these folks, and that's not kosher. So, that's not on. Second, anecdotally, the prior version, many, many years ago, there was a discussion about the town potentially subsidizing a reduction in density in the former project by purchasing of conservation restriction on the rear portion of the property that would have eaten up a couple of the buildings. Mr. Motzkin wasn't interested at that time, we never advanced it further than that. That's just anecdotal. But we can't approach Mr. Motzkin, that would be a violation of these guys' rights. So, we don't have that authority.
You know, if they think they're not going to, they don't want to spend the money to go to court, you don't want to spend the money to court, maybe there can be some kind of accommodation made. I mean, we got approved for 2.2 million at Town Hall of CPC money to build these, to make these units affordable. So, you know, maybe it can happen for this piece of property.
And just to go back to accommodations, I do appreciate what the applicant is saying in that if we want them to spend time and money to potentially make significant changes to this plan for the public safety concerns. make significant changes to this plan for the public safety concerns that we're raising, they seem to be asking for some assurances that we're in a place where if they knock it out of the park on those concerns that we're raising, this project flies to us.
I think they're asking for all the concerns up front.
Yeah.
Not to be tackled down.
And that seems like a pretty fair request to me. If, it just, that's it, it seems like a pretty fair request to me.
Certainly a common request that applicants make, especially under forty B, where you're kind of with a blank canvas from permitting standpoint, and you're kind of making it up.
Right.
As you go along, so to speak. So I think it's a fair request. It's also fair for the board to say, I'm not sure yet.
Sure.
I think Sarah has recognized the improvements in the project. John has spoken on it. I think everyone here has recognized at one point or another that this project and their level of effort is off the charts compared to the last go around. So, you know, other than that, there's different types of board members. Sometimes board members are pretty vocal where they stand, sometimes they're quieter. And so I think they're getting a bit of a flavor for it, but it's totally legitimate question.
And one question?
One question.
All right.
So if the board decided to give them a yes with a number of conditions, and they don't like the conditions, then they can go to court, right?
Correct.
So, once you give them conditions that they don't like it, they still have a lot of avenues to go through. So it's not that they, that they're willing to agree to anything that, if you work with them to give them conditions that seem reasonable to everybody on the board, they can still walk away and go to court, right?
Yes. Yes, but they would have to challenge those conditions.
Right.
And the court would have to find that each of those conditions was not in the spirit of forty B, and the ones that they felt were would remain. And that was the point I was, yeah.
Yeah. And let me make it clear, and you guys know this, going to court is very bad for us. It's worse for you, but it's bad for all of us. I mean, in some way, our interests are aligned. I know not exactly, but it's a bad outcome for both of us. And that's not our hope, and that's not our goal, and I wouldn't be doing all this stuff if it's just like, I don't care, you know, we're going to court anyway. I don't want that. And we are going to continue to work, and we're going to have a good meeting with the chairman and the fire department. We're going to have a clear vision of what they want, and we're going to see what we can do. And we'll probably, you know, if there's some, and we'll see. So, you know, let's set a date, and we'll continue to work.
And let's be clear too about if they're were making modifications. We know generally what the architecture is like. I don't think there's anything that we would require to fully redesign the
Jay, it's all on the table.
No, right, no. What I'm saying, Jeff, is that if it was determined that the footprint had to shrink to accommodate a certain thing, accepting the small number of engineering things that the engineers have to, those are the post-permit final design of the elevations of that, if we're moving things by a few feet. That's not pre-permit. We have a sense of the architectural ethics. It could be the money you spend to get from here to a design that satisfies the concerns you've heard tonight, doesn't necessarily have to be a full redesign. It could be showing us where the footprint is. So there are ways to address that issue without blowing
Right. You can condition it in a way that we know, we've seen that, where we know what we have to do.
We're talking about the footprint here.
Right. But for our own knowledge, like, we need to know, you know, what that building is going to look like, and if we're going to lose a couple parking spaces or stuff like that.
Fair. I'm just saying that in terms of presenting a complete redesign to this
Right. We'll see. Your point's well taken. I mean, we understand what the issues are.
Yes, sir.
Sarah asked if, you know, if she's voted forty Bs, I've public sound on
Too many.
Seven?
Eight.
Eight. So I've, and we've fought battles over botchy courts. That's trying to make a forty B as reasonable as possible. And we've had very contentious discussions with applicants. I applaud the anglers there. They have been very cooperative. That's absolute. Any decision this board makes is appealable, and this board tries to make decisions that are consistent with the law. Sometimes the courts say, we're wrong. And that's when, and that's, Doherty didn't come from this board, came from Planning Board. Foam Road, I was in the, on the side that voted to approve it because it was one structure in a neighborhood of houses that were existing, and it was owned by the individual applying for thirty or forty, it might have been fifty years. There's reasons for that decision. It was appealed. The appeal didn't go the way, it went one way, then it was appealed again, and it went the other way. It's not simple. It's not predetermined. We don't know what happens when it goes to court. But we make the best decision we can here at this board, and that I think we all have to appreciate. Nobody wants to go to court. Everybody loses in court except the lawyers. Jay, sorry. But it's just the way it is. Anthony's comment is very important. An approved forty B with conditions is better than a denied forty B in terms of ability to continue to have a dog in the fight and continue to be able to debate it. You asked, Jeff, rightly so, what is it going to take? My concern is the fire and safety part of it. I'm looking, I've been sitting here staring at the plan, and I'm looking at the area to the south. You're relatively close to the lot line, but you're, I'd like to see somehow to be able to get equipment to the east. If you took a portion of the building to the south and moved it, kind of made it a U shape instead of an L shape, so that you maybe don't even have to change the number of units. But you can get, and I'm thinking of the Central School. We wanted a grass, yeah, a grassy
Pavers.
The pavers, so the fire trucks could run on it around Central School, so they could not only get back to the new building that the Housing Authority wants to put in, but then get out from the other direction. Am I recollection of how it went?
Yes. Yep.
That kind of thing. It may be that you're at code. I just don't think in a storm, wet situation, I'd like, I'd really like to have a way to get a truck back there, rather than have firefighters carrying ladders. I don't operate a ladder truck, but if you have access to the front of that building and you can get access to the east, the north, I don't know.
That would give you, that would give you three sides.
Three sides. You're closer to the issue. I just don't know if that's it, but it may not be required by the fire department, but it's something that I'd feel a lot more comfortable with this.
And I appreciate your candor, I do. And that's why I think, I mean, what we, and I apologize, you know, I obviously get animated, and that's my personality, and it's something I work on, but it doesn't seem to be getting too much better.
I blame your father.
Yeah, right.
I tried, did I?
Yeah, yeah. So my frustration was just like, I felt like I was shooting at a moving target. So that's why I think if we have this meeting and we can talk to the fire department and understand, then we can say, because we thought we were there, and your points are well taken. So let's have the meeting, see, you know, maybe some of the things that you're interpreting aren't a big deal, maybe some things are a bigger deal, and let's, and then we all are on the same page, and then I can go to my civil and our architect, and we can roll up our sleeves and we can look at some of these ideas, so.
Candidly, I was hoping that the meeting with the fire department from the last time would be conclusive, it would be clear. But for me, it just raised more concerns, because when we start talking about a fifteen foot at elevation around the two sides of the building, it's just not there. And there's no way to do it with this plan.
Well, it
And if we're going to be modifying it, I don't know how wide you have to be for a truck, but I don't think it's, you know, thirty feet. Is it twenty-three?
I thought twenty-three.
Oh, it's not that wide.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I would guess.
Yeah, they're like nine, they're like nine feet from
Sixteen so they can
Stabilizes that.
Jeff, I'll make a suggestion, and I'm perfectly happy to participate in the meeting, is that have a conversation with your architect and see, and site tech too, in terms of the impact of maybe more fill on the east side, and see if you could, if there's design elements you could do without losing a single unit that address these concerns.
Well, Jay, we're going to do all that.
Yeah.
I mean, but it's helpful for us to know, you know, we'll start that now, but it's not a fruitful exercise to go too far until we know kind of some of these other issues.
But I think you're hearing a
Yes.
Regardless of what code or what they may or may not say, there's an ongoing concern, so.
I understand. We understand.
Just to follow up, I think you have some options here as to how to address some of our concerns, whether it be, you know
Fair. Shrinking the building or moving parts or whatever.
Or additional fire protection that make access less important. I want to hear it.
Again, sprinkling the back of the building, on the exterior that, you know, allows you to do some things differently. So, you know, we're willing to listen.
Yeah, let's get it, let's get a date.
And one other question, and again, I'm not here to design the building, so, but I recognize it was to your letter question, item four that we didn't really get to. But it indicates that the dry, dry construction of the parking can't be done in a residential structure. So we learned that. But what about, again, I'm thinking of the waves, and I know they're not going to be huge, but even though we have to allow water to come in, can we create a wave interruption system or something? And I don't mean big, I mean like, like a four-foot-high wall that will slow the water coming through and allow it to flow in and out, you know? Only from the standpoint of if there is a vehicle left there, maybe you'd have a lot more water based on surge and wind than on actual tide. And I don't know whether there's anything that can be done to mitigate without compromising the
Code.
The code for in and out.
So are you talking about like
Well, let's say you had staggered bollards, you know, rectangular bollards, so that the water would have to come in and flow around one and around the next one, kind of a, so that, you know, something like, I don't know.
You put a wall with storm vents in, that would allow water as it creeps up to come in, so, whatever, you're going to ask your
But I think we've already designed, I think that's what the design already includes, is we have the
You have breakaway panels, I think.
Right.
But that's, but that's just, those break away pretty quickly. I'm thinking of something that just get more, a little more resistance to the wave action side of it, not
Or if in the first three feet of the, it was solid or something like that.
I don't think you can make it solid, but can you make it, you know, semi-permeable, so it's, we know the water's going to come in, but it's going to come in without the force of the wind and wave behind it, something like that.
I see. So it's not necessarily stopping any of the, if a big wave, like it disperses it somehow or whatever.
Yeah, or just
We'll ask, we'll ask, we'll ask.
Do you want to go on to other properties in the area?
Oh, just, let me, that was brought up earlier. Let me, let me, let me address the question and the idea of a berm. Berms are to redirect water that's coming onto the property from rainwater or runoff from a street or something like that, a relatively small amount of water that's coming through and has to be redirected. The idea that when you put the fill, and I've mentioned, I'm not thrilled about filling wetlands, but when you put fill in a flood area, it really doesn't matter how much you put there, you're not significantly changing the water. The water, you just, you just aren't. I've gone through and looked at it. The water is not, there's not, there's so much water.
The ocean.
The amount that you, the ocean, it's infinite, and the amount that you put in, yes, it's, the water's not going to be there, but the amount that that small amount of water is distributed over all of the area is infinitesimal.
I guess, can I just, the description that was used in Webster's Dictionary shows the beach and the cliff, and it said that's the description of a berm.
I did read, I did, I did read, I did read your submittal.
And what we said is this is for a tide. The tide is like, is, so, yes, the ocean is infinite. Yes, this is a small parcel, but in the two to four hours that that place is being inundated, that ocean cannot absorb it. When the tide goes out, the ocean takes it, but not then.
I don't, I don't agree.
Okay, all right.
And the engineers, I've looked it up, the engineers are, I understand the physics and the theory of what the engineers are telling us. I do, no, I understand that too. I just don't know that, I don't know that we're creating, if it was in a pond or something, and that we had run up into a pond, then you'd have, the pond could only hold so much, but the ocean can hold a lot more.
In the basement, yeah, thank you.
And just to add, in addition to that, the tow truck question was asked, and I thought it was a very good question. You guys could give us a little bit on that. I think it, I tend to think that one person can move thirty or forty cars over the course of even an hour or two, but I also think that it's very likely that more than one person won't have keys. Even if you very diligently enforce it, people are going to screw up. What happens if there's four cars and we can't find the keys? What is the deal with a tow truck in there or other machinery, whatever it is?
We had a discussion with our property managers about towing.
Yeah.
Residents refuse to move their cars.
Yes.
We're not 100% sure they're going to go there yet, and whether we'd sell a unit with somebody knowing that we could take their car out, I guess they will, if they wanted to leave it there. That's an open question, and I don't have to put an answer on right now.
Okay, well, so I think that's important information for us to know, because I
I mean, that's a detail we need to, prior to occupancy, we can work on this plan and get it all worked out. This is a draft of the principles of it, really.
I, I would tend to say that that was one of the founding principles of the plan.
What, the towing?
No, to get vehicles moved.
Getting the cars out.
Oh, yeah.
And not admitting defeat on getting the cars out yet.
You're having more than one manager or maintenance guy move the cars.
And I'm not, what I meant to say is I'm not so concerned about your ability to move the cars in the time.
There's several people
But I think the question of what happens if you don't have a set of keys or several sets of keys, I think that's a question that warrants some form of answer from you guys, and I don't expect it right now.
The other thing, we do have some other business want to schedule another meeting. I believe we need another letter of extension from you guys as well, which I'm sure you agree to. As far as the board goes.
I don't think there's any room on that, our next meeting.
No, I think we've already got
Probably a week after July 4th.
Yeah, I was thinking that week too, maybe.
The 12th?
Yeah. Because
I think that
Let's just, I mean, because best case, we meet next week with the fire chief, and that's the middle of June, and then if we have to make some
Redesign takes time.
Hopefully not time to redesign, that's going to take us seven weeks.
I will be in New York the week of that, that week.
Following the 4th?
Week of the
Nine to 13.
Nine to 13.
I'm not on vacation. You're going anywhere you want.
Well, I won't be able to make it on nine to 13.
And then we have our, July, we have our regular monthly meeting on the 19th.
Oh, man. What were we talking, June 19th?
July.
July.
Jeez, you gotta be kidding me.
If they're going to do a redesign
Is there something the last week of June?
The 28th?
Yeah.
That's three weeks from now.
So, so I'm a little confused. You're assuming
We can always continue it by agreement if you guys aren't ready.
Yeah, if we're not ready, we can just, can we pick two dates?
Do you want to pick the 28th?
I think that's a notice issue.
No, but if we
Oh, we don't.
No, but, or 10, what I'm getting at is, let's say we pick June 28th or whatever, and we collectively determine it's not the best, we're not quite ready, then everybody knows, well, the second date, as opposed to having to go back to everybody, and then we're into August. That's what I'm getting at.
Not fun, yeah. It would be tentative, because No, fine. Yeah. It would be tentative because you'd...
The second one would be tentative.
Do we have any idea what July looks like, July 19th meeting?
I'm not available the 19th.
You're...
No, the 19th I'm here because that's our regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I'm planning to be here.
Jay's not here the 19th.
I leave. Yeah. I have a little mini-vacation. I am here the 28th though of June.
Of June?
Yeah.
So am I. I just think... We could go June 28th and...
I almost hope that they're not ready because it means that things are happening.
Right.
On the 28th.
Well, but as Jay said, we might have an interim plan, you know?
I'm available on the 28th.
So, do we want... Is everyone available the 28th? Sarah?
Yes.
You'd probably prefer the 28th and going into July, I think.
I think... Let's try it.
And then should we put a tentative date after the 28th?
We'd be into the week of the 23rd of July.
Wow.
Right.
So, that would be our normal continuance date anyway, right?
The 26th.
Yeah. So, I mean, you can.
So, 20... So, we have June 28th for sure. And then in the... And the second one is July what?
You'd be July 26.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. So, we're betwixt and between because June 28th might be quick, but July 26th is way out there. So...
It is.
Yeah. Lose the week before.
No, I understand and Ed's gone. So, I think it's okay.
Let's see, we can accomplish...
The onus is on us. So, you know, we have to do what we got to do. So, I'll coordinate...
One more thing about the fire standards. There is an industry standard. Rather than just having conversations with the fire chief and the deputy chief, you can look up the fire standards of how...
Yes, but the...
What is the width of...
Yes. That's what the fire chief goes by and they are the jurisdiction people that enforce those standards. So, that's why we want to go there.
That's where we'd be continuing.
Okay. But I'm just saying that there are written standards.
Oh, yes. They have them.
You have to have a 26-foot wide for an aerial truck to get situated. If you're going to have the back of the building, I don't know, four stories high.
Five.
So, five stories high. So, a hand-carried ladder to the east side of the building isn't really going to help much if it's five stories high.
What I was suggesting...
You mean an aerial truck back there?
What I was suggesting was how wide does it have to be to get by the south side of the building into a staging area centered on the east side of the building that could be stable and available to take equipment that would be appropriate for fighting a fire on that side? That's what I was... It would require more fill and that's when we got the response that one more fill mean more displaced water and let's not go back there again.
I understand that. I'm just saying that there is written industry standards.
We do appreciate that.
So, our next meeting is the 28th. When will we know whether you're ready or not? We're going to need a certain amount of...
How many days in advance do you need to know?
Yeah. It's... Would you let us know about that Monday?
Oh, I... Jeez, if you get a week ahead because if you're going to have documents, we got to have time to review.
We're not going to have documents.
No documents. Okay.
I'd have some plans.
We'll have a plan. You know, we'll have something to say, you know, here are the key highlights. Here's the, you know, fire access. Here's the width. Here are the changes. I mean, it's a take a temperature. It's not going to be... I mean, we're going to work diligently at it, but we're probably by the 28th. And then if you guys say, "Yeah, this is looking pretty good," then we advance it and we fully... And then by the July, what is it?
26.
26. We get it to Woodard and Curran. They can hopefully say, "Yeah, it doesn't change our findings," you know, blah, biddy, blah. So, that's what I'm thinking anyway.
But I think there's another option. If we're not ready, because everything unravels, I think we might not even have the meeting in June and just go right to July, give Woodard and Curran the plan, give everybody a plan. But there's no reason to have an interim meeting when we don't have enough to go on.
Well, that's what they're...
So, a week ahead of time, we'll let you know that we're...
That way we can notify anyone.
Yes. The Monday...
That it's posted ahead of time. So...
That Monday, if we don't think it'll be an efficient use of your time and our time, we'll let Ann know that. Let's just hold the July 23rd.
Annie, what's... I should know this, but what's the timeframe for posting meetings? Three days?
Um, 48.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours. Two days. Okay.
And so, sorry, just to confirm, the second meeting in July is what's the date?
26.
26. Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And the time, both those meetings is 7:00. And this would be the location as far as we know.
Well, yeah.
Annie will confirm.
Far as we know.
If it changes.
All right. Thanks, Pat.
It's up to the...
You have a motion formally to schedule the next hearing on June 28th? I don't know that I heard that.
We have... We're doing it right now.
Okay.
We're just trying to get confirmation.
We're checking our calendars.
Yeah. So, we have a motion. I guess we can motion both meetings.
So, motion to schedule the next meeting for June 28th at 7:00 PM and the following meeting for July 26th at 7:00 PM.
Move to continue this meeting until...
Yes. Move to schedule the continuation of this hearing for those dates.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then a little more questions tonight. We'll go back at it when we have some more information. Also, I...
We have minutes.
Yes, we will.
Yep.
Any other information we should make?
Thank you.
Well, no, not yet. Do you have minutes for us? No minutes for us tonight.
We're still live in the meeting. So, just give us a couple of minutes to...
Annie has confirmed that she does not have minutes for us tonight.
Okay. So, with no minutes, in that case, motion... Are there any change or issues there? No. I don't have any change.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May 17th meeting?
Yes. Second?
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Are we... Any other business?
No other business. All of the favor?
Aye.